2021 brings a new year and new members on your Surprise City Council. Let's meet them. Mayor Skip Hall was first elected to council in April 2008. He was appointed to serve as mayor in November 2018, following a mayoral resignation. He was elected as mayor in August 2020. His four-year term began on January 1st, 2021, and expires on December 31st, 2024. District 1 council member Roland Winters was elected to council in August 2013. He was re-elected to council in November 2018. His four-year term began January 1st, 2019, and will expire December 31st, 2022. Ally Klein is your District 2 council member. She was elected to council in August 2020. Her four-year term began on January 1st, 2021, and expires December 31st, 2024. Vice Mayor Patrick Duffy was appointed to council in September 2017. Duffy was elected to council in August 2018 for a two-year term, and was re-elected to council in August 2020. His four-year term began on January 1st, 2021, and expires December 31st, 2024. District 4 council member Ken Remley was elected to council in August 2016. He was re-elected to council in August 2020. His four-year term began January 1st, 2021, and will expire December 31st, 2024. Jack Hastings was elected as the District 5 council member in August 2020. Replacing an appointed council member, he assumed the seat in November 2020. His two-year term expires December 31st, 2022. Chris Judd was elected as District 6 council member in August 2018. His four-year term began on January 1st, 2019, and expires December 31st, 2022.
Okay, I'd like to call this regular city council work session of March 2nd to order. Could I have a roll call, please?
Mayor Hall.
Here.
Vice Mayor Duffy.
Here.
Councilmember Hastings.
Here.
Councilmember Remley.
Here.
Councilmember Judd.
Here.
Councilmember Winters.
Here.
Councilmember Klein.
Here.
Thank you.
Do I mean for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Is there anybody from the public that wants to speak to this council? That's not on the agenda?
No, Mayor.
Okay. So we have two items on the agenda on the work session. Item number one.
Presentation and discussion pertaining to the proposed City of Surprise Property Maintenance Ordinance.
Welcome.
All right, good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. I am here this afternoon to discuss the proposed Property Maintenance Ordinance with you. This afternoon, I'll talk a little bit about code enforcement, talk about the current guiding document for property maintenance, and then why we're proposing this Property Maintenance Ordinance. So anytime you're talking about property maintenance, it's important to also bear in mind what the city's Code Enforcement Division does. And so, Code Enforcement is a division of the city's Community Development Department. We currently have four code inspectors assigned to different quadrants within the city. And those inspectors are charged with the enforcement of all property maintenance codes and ordinances as adopted by this council. The effort of the Code Enforcement Division includes the prevention, detection, and investigation of any potential violations of those adopted codes. So what is a Property Maintenance Ordinance? A Property Maintenance Ordinance is a document that is adopted by city council, and it sets the minimum standard for property maintenance in the city. So it's the minimum standard to which all lands, whether residential, commercial, vacant, are to be maintained to. The purpose of adopting a Property Maintenance Ordinance is to promote a clean, healthy, and safe community by ensuring that all property are maintained to those same minimum standards. Once adopted, the Property Maintenance Ordinance then becomes not only a guide for residents to understand how to maintain their lands, but it is also the guiding document for code enforcement in conducting their efforts. So a little bit of background about property maintenance in the City of Surprise. The last time that a Property Maintenance Ordinance was adopted was in 2007, and city council adopted the 2006 International Property Maintenance Code. That document is still the current guiding document for property maintenance in the city today. The International Property Maintenance Code, or IPMC, as I'll shorten that title too, was, it's part of the international series of codes, just like our building fire residential codes are. And so they were published by the International Code Council. It has been a goal of the Community Development Department for some time now to adopt a local property maintenance ordinance because of some of the limitations of that international series of codes. First and probably most importantly, one of the limitations is the lack of transparency and publication control. Because the I-codes are developed and published by the ICC or the International Code Council, they're written very broadly so that they can be picked up and applied to any city in the country. So they're not specific to the needs of our growing community today. Further, the city does not have the publication rights to those I-codes. They're published by ICC, and so what we do is we keep hard copies of the IPMC at the clerk's office. If a resident wanted to come in and read the I-codes, that's where they'd have to go to do that. So we can't publish it on MUNI code along with all of our other city codes. So to that extent, our current practice, when code enforcement issues a notice of violation, we're citing the text from the IPMC in its entirety in that notice of violation so that the residents have the full text because we recognize they don't have access, excuse me, access to it otherwise. Excuse me. So again, in wanting to adopt a local property maintenance ordinance, the accessibility, the transparency, is one of the key components that we want to overcome. Another limitation is just, again, the lack of specificity. Those codes are written so broadly, they can be picked up and applied to any community. There's nothing in there specific to how we want to see Surprise continue to grow and develop. The lack of publication control and transparency, again, are probably the biggest deficiencies we wish to overcome in developing a local PMO for consideration and adoption by this council. It's important that the residents have access to those expectations of property maintenance. We don't want this to be a guessing game for them. We don't want them to not be able to find that language and research on their own and know what those expectations are when they're building a home or coming in as a commercial business to the city. And so being able to publish that information online would certainly improve transparency in that regard. So if adopted by this council at a future meeting, the PMO would then replace the IPMC, the draft before you tonight, would replace the IPMC as the guiding document for property maintenance. We could publish that then online as part of our MUNI code. And we would also have the ability to update that as frequently as we needed to in response to our community's needs. In preparing the draft PMO that's before you tonight, we looked at several other cities who have already done the same. So we are not venturing out on our own as the first city to ever do this. There are several other cities with local ordinances. Each of these city's ordinances were reviewed in great detail, and so the pieces that we felt that applied to our community were pulled into this draft document. So IPMC versus PMO, what are some of the differences? Largely, the expectation for property maintenance remained the same. So we aren't drastically changing what those minimum requirements are between the two documents. However, there are some changes that occurred that I want to draw your attention to. So the removal of redundant language and definitions. Again, the IPMC was drafted by the ICC, the International Code Council, lots of acronyms in code enforcement. And as a result, there's a lot of carryover language between that document and our building and fire codes. That language was removed, as were any definitions that were also not necessary. Again, in an effort to be transparent, we added in several new definitions. Anywhere in the document that we thought that the community would benefit from a better understanding of what we were talking about, we added a definition. So staff recognizes, we deal with all of these acronyms and technical terms on a daily basis. The community at large does not. We wanted to make sure there was no guesswork in what we were trying to get to and what the property maintenance expectations are. Despite the additional definitions, the IPMC is approximately 30 pages in length. The proposed PMO, as it's drafted right now, is just 19. So we have been able to condense that document, again, hopefully for publication as part of our, excuse me, municipal code. Another change is that we clarified the notice of violation, citation abatement, and lien processes that the city's Code Enforcement Department currently uses. At a very high level, those were mentioned in the IPMC. We went into a little bit greater detail in the proposed PMO about what exactly those processes are and how we follow them in code enforcement. Something new to the Property Maintenance Ordinance is the inspection warrant process. That process is not currently articulated in the IPMC because every state regulates warrants differently. In the state of Arizona, we have the opportunity to request an administrative or inspection warrant. And so that process was added into the Proposed Property Maintenance Ordinance. Again, for transparency, we don't want there to be any guesswork about what that process would look like.
Councilman Judd?
Yeah, just real quick, what exactly is an inspection warrant?
So I was just gonna get to that, you beat me to it. I was just about to give you an example of when we would use that. So probably the best example of when we would use that, let's say our counterparts in law enforcement responded to a 911 call in a home. They go out, they handle the emergency situation. But while they're in the home, they're looking around, they notice this is not a healthy or safe environment. What happens in those situations? They then turn around and notify code enforcement, hey, there's, go to this address. There's a property you're gonna want to take a look at. Here's my police report number, you know, regarding what I observed when I was out there. Code enforcement would then go to that property. We would knock on the door, ask to go into the home, let them know that we had been made aware that there's a potential situation that's not safe or healthy, you know, for the resident or possibly the community at large, depending on the severity of it. And if we were denied access, that's when that warrant process would kick in. So if we were denied access to resolve that issue, but we believed, excuse me, but we believed that issue existed because we had body cam footage, a police report, an officer's statement of what they witnessed out there, we could then go before a judge, take that evidence, and make an argument to get an inspection warrant. The inspection warrant process, I want to be abundantly clear, is not intended to militaries or cause code enforcement to become tactical in any manner. It's simply another tool in our toolbox to make sure that we have a mechanism to resolve those cases where we know there's an issue of health or safety that needs to be addressed. And so with that inspection warrant, if it was granted by the judge, we would then take that, respond back to the home with law enforcement. We wouldn't try to serve that warrant on our own. We would take one of our counterparts in law enforcement, respond back to the home, serve the warrant, and gain access for inspection at that point in time.
And so what kind of things could exist inside a home that would necessitate that?
So if you have, let's say you have an extreme hoarding situation. You possibly have infestation of rodents, of insects, of any manner of things. We have had situations where we have been alerted to a home that was maybe at one point in time used as a drug home. So all manner of alterations have been made to the interior, exposed wires, things that could possibly be building or fire issues that we would want to definitely get in there and make sure were resolved for the safety of not only the occupants of that home, but anybody in the surrounding area. We want to make sure that the community is not dealing with those issues on a large scale. So internal engagement. Each of the departments listed here has had a role in developing the draft Property Maintenance Ordinance before you tonight, and that is an ongoing process. We continue to look at and revise and refine this document, and hopefully have it in a final condition to bring back to you for adoption here in a couple of months. In between that time, we will also be conducting some public engagement. So in addition to continuing to work with my departments, counterparts in other departments within the city, we will be going outside the city, or I'm sorry, outside of the city organization to the community to obtain input from the public on the proposed Property Maintenance Ordinance. We want to make sure that they have the opportunity to learn about it, understand it, ask questions, really put eyes on it, and give us some good feedback in regard to their thoughts about the Property Maintenance Ordinance. So there is a webpage that goes live this afternoon. That begins our 60-day public comment period. There are letters that will go out tomorrow morning to all the various HOA boards and community associations. There is a recorded version of this presentation that will go live on that website with a copy of the draft Property Maintenance Ordinance. There are two public meetings scheduled to be held. At this time, they're scheduled to be virtual, but if we ever get to the point where that doesn't have to be, we'll have those, we'll convert those to in-person. The first public meeting is scheduled for March 30th, the second for April 13th. Public comment will close the beginning of May, and then we'll incorporate all of the revisions that we've received from the public, any feedback tonight from council, any additional feedback from our internal stakeholders, and again, hopefully bring a final version of this document back to you for consideration and adoption in June. If adopted in June, the PMO would take effect in July. And with that, I will take any other questions or comments that you may have.
Councilman Winters.
Thank you, Mayor. I didn't hear anything about an HOA getting involved in this. Do you just go straight from the property, the bad property, to the city? We don't try and include the HOA in this?
So there are circumstances where the HOA might become involved. There are a lot of different scenarios that could play out in that regard. So HOAs can be more restrictive than the city in terms of what they're asking. Again, the Property Maintenance Ordinance, this is the minimum threshold for property maintenance. If an HOA wants to be restrictive, an example, the Property Maintenance Ordinance says weeds can't be in excess of six inches. Maybe the HOA says it has to be three or four. If something like that were to come in, we would go out, let them know, you know, the weeds that we see unfortunately are not in violation. And a lot of times residents will tell us, well, the HOA says. And we go, okay, well, let us help you coordinate with the HOA. So a lot of what we do is helping the resident connect with their HOA and coordinate resolution to a lot of these things if they go beyond the scope of that minimum threshold that we're looking at from a code enforcement perspective. There are several things that code enforcement does do that don't involve the HOA. So if something is a violation of our Property Maintenance Ordinance, we absolutely do go forth and can pursue enforcement action without involving the HOA. If the violation's on HOA property, then we're definitely working with the HOA.
Thank you.
Councilman Hastings.
Thank you, Mayor. Another question about, so this would supersede, I mean, one, I like the idea of setting a standard, you know, in Surprise. And if, you know, HOAs want to be stricter, I mean, we all know that HOAs all have differing standards. And then within those differing standards, they have different levels of enforcement of how much they actually enforce those standards, at least with my personal experience with HOAs. So this would supersede HOAs. So if we set a standard and an HOA's current CCNRs, you know, don't meet that minimum, they would be required to come back and fall within that, fall, I mean, this would supersede HOAs, correct?
Mayor, Councilmember Hastings, yes. So this, well, we wouldn't require the HOA to change anything. We don't have copies of each and every CCNR for every community, and we don't go through and compare and contrast. But the expectation is yes, the city's document resides. And that's the standard we enforce, too.
So we don't currently have one now, am I right?
We do, we have the international version of a Property Maintenance Ordinance, not a local one.
How long have we had that for?
Since 2007.
2007, okay. I saw that, okay. And then, so how long have, you know, other cities, how long have other cities had their own PMOs for? Has this been kind of a recent development where cities have started to get them, you know, over the last couple of years? Or have they had them for a while? I'm just kind of wondering like why we're doing, I mean, I like this idea. I'm just kind of wondering why we're, seems like we're getting to it a little late.
Sure. Mayor, Councilmember Hastings, I will tell you that a lot of the cities we looked at have had their Property Maintenance Ordinances in place for have had their property maintenance ordinances in place for quite a while, several years. So, I think what you're alluding to is why are we so late to this process? And I would just tell you, this has been a goal of ours for quite some time. The undertaking of building a document like this, comparing it with what other cities are doing, making sure that what our expectations are aren't out of the realm of kind of the norm and the standard, getting all of that feedback from our internal stakeholders to just build this is quite a process.
Yeah.
And so, I think all of that has contributed to the delay in us coming before you to actually take action and adopt this.
Well, I love this idea because I know for myself, I've been approached many times by residents about issues related to HOAs, and we have to refer them to HOAs because we don't have a set standard necessarily. And so, it's nice to have an expectation, have something to refer back to. So, thank you for starting this process.
Absolutely.
And we look forward to getting feedback from residents and HOAs as we start to continue along, so.
Yes, agreed. Thank you.
Okay, Councilwoman Remley?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a question. Since 2007, we have not had the code, the laws that you've been enforcing as part of our city code.
Mayor, Councilmember Remley, that is correct.
But if somebody wanted to read what the things were that you were enforcing, they could come to City Hall and read the book on it.
Yes, so clarification, it has been part of our code. We did adopt it. So, we adopted the International Property Maintenance Code, however, we couldn't publish it.
So, why couldn't they read a written document other than having to come to City Hall to read the darn thing?
Because we didn't have the publication rights to the International Property Maintenance Code. I don't know that it was ever requested. I believe it is probably cost prohibitive just because of the size of the documents.
Well, see, the thing of it is, we have 140,000 people who don't know what the rules are, and we can't give them a copy of what those rules are. That's ridiculous.
So, let me clarify this. The ICC codes are copyrighted, and so, in order to publish copyrighted codes, we'd have to pay a fee that's cost prohibitive for us based on our current budget. So, we agree with you, which is why we are transitioning to this, but just like...
But why haven't we before now put something in writing as to what the rules were for people to maintain their property in this city?
So, it is in writing, it just can't be published online.
Right.
It is in writing.
It is in writing that nobody can read because they don't have it available to them, right?
It is available with the city clerk.
Okay, so we tell all the people, we've told the whole city, the 140,000 people, that they can come down here and read what the rules are in terms of maintaining their property. Is that what we've done? No, we haven't. I just want to know why we haven't done anything before now. Please explain to me why we have not done anything before now.
So, part of the reason is, is we haven't had the staff to be able to do so.
Since 2007?
Correct.
So, when we adopted it...
So, in terms of priorities, although this was an important priority, it wasn't our most important priority. Our most important priority has been to process our permits, get our inspections done, to respond to code enforcement complaints. So, as Tiffany alluded to, this, creating an ordinance is a very time-consuming process.
Well, the complaints were of rules that nobody knew.
Well, no, because obviously people understood the complaint or the rules, or they wouldn't have made a complaint. So, we process approximately 5,000 code enforcement cases a year. So, people do have a knowledge of the rules.
No, they don't. They're complaining because they don't like the way their neighbor's yard looks or something like that, but they don't know whether there's a rule or not, okay? And I, my question is, we had a city council sitting here in 2007, and we had an international code that had been adopted already, and we couldn't take those words from that code and write it down in an ordinance at that time, and I don't understand that.
Well, I don't think you can just copy verbatim what they have because, again, it's copyrighted, so I think that...
We didn't ask them, though. We didn't ask them, did we?
No, but we certainly have asked what the cost would have been, and it was prohibitive to publish it, and so, we understood that we would need to publish our own code.
Okay. Okay. It's just irritating to me that the people don't know what the rules are, but they can be held liable for them. I think that's wrong.
But, Chris, they can get a copy of this once we adopt it.
Not only can they get a copy of it, it'll be online.
Yeah, and it'll be online.
Right.
So, we're elevating the awareness, but it doesn't mean you haven't done anything because you haven't had this.
To be clear also, as Tiffany alluded to, every time we issue a notice of violation, so approximately 5,000 notices of violation go out every year, every violation that we allege that that person's in violation of, we publish each one of those violations along with the complete text for that code so that they have a very clear understanding of what the allegations are.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying, Councilwoman Remley. No, I get that.
It just irks me that we've had a code enforcement department that had been enforcing a code that is not available to the general public unless they want to go to trouble to come to City Hall and read it.
Well, they also could obviously call us and ask us.
Right.
We get hundreds of calls a week about what's a violation, and we explain those violations to them.
Point taken.
No, I got it. I got it. It's just, it really irks me that this hadn't been done before now.
Yeah, so we'll get it done now.
Yes, sir.
Okay, Chris?
Because I have code enforcement people that have said grass that's four inches is too long.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you said.
I've had code enforcement people that said grass that's greater than four inches is too long, and I want to read that book where it says grass that's four inches is too long, and it's a code enforcement violation.
I don't know. I haven't heard that.
I mean, I've seen bizarre examples like that. That is pretty bizarre, I realize, but...
Yeah.
Okay. Councilwoman Judd?
Thank you, Mayor. So, a couple of questions. The first one is, as was just touched on quite a bit, when someone was given a violation previously, we'd give them a copy of the text of that violation that occurred.
Correct.
Are we going to continue to do that? I mean, it seems like a nice customer service thing to do.
Mayor, Councilmember Judd, yes, we, our notice of violation form actually allows for that. So, it has the section of the code that's been violated numerically and then the text, and I don't foresee us needing to change that.
Okay. And so, the next one is, I've got some reservations about Section XX14, the interior maintenance. And without getting into the weeds of it, there's a few things on here that I'm concerned about. Well, first, some of this is redundant through building code, isn't it? Some of the violations that are described in here, like you have to have a bathroom, things like that.
So, Mayor, Councilmember Judd, we went to painstaking detail to make sure that we didn't reiterate anything specifically that was already stated elsewhere in the code. So, most of what's in here, in terms of requiring a bathroom, yes. Obviously, there are certain buildings that require a bathroom, and so, what we wanted to do is really break that down for the people who might not be reading the technical building codes, but we want them to still have a basic understanding of what's needed without duplicating a whole lot of that language between the two documents. So, there might be some general overlap, I think, to answer your question.
And then, we have some stuff in here, this has really stuck out, peeling, chipping, flaking, braided paint. This is inside the house, right? So, we're concerned if someone's hall has peeling paint?
So, Mayor, Councilmember Judd, where we would see that would, again, probably be in those situations where it's been a drug house, there's been a severe interior damage, that's what we're looking for. If we're inside a home and someone's got some paint scuffs, we're not issuing a notice of violation for that. We're looking for more severe things that could be an indicator that the home's just generally not well-maintained and not being taken care of, and that there could be other health or safety issues in the home as well.
So, I would rather it be more specific like that than instead of saying, I mean, you can get a jerk for a code enforcer guy 10 years from now when none of us are here to say, well, that wasn't the intent. I'd rather it was clear on the intent, we're not going to give someone a violation for having chip paint in their hallway, we're not going to give them a violation for having some artistic decayed wood. I mean, we've got decayed wood as something in here, too.
So, Councilmember Judd, one of the things that we, the reason, the primary reason for the interior conditions is not to kind of violate the principle that a man's home is his castle, but it's really to help the people who don't own their homes, who sometimes end up being subjected to less-than-ideal living conditions because, for whatever situation, so they're a tenant, and so, we want to make sure that they have the ability to live in an environment that any of us would be comfortable in living in, right? So, you know, at my house, if there's chipping, peeling paint, you know, I have somebody that's going to tell me that that needs to be corrected, and we're going to get it taken care of, and...
So, your wife's a code inspector, is that what you're telling me?
Yes, sir, that's exactly what I'm saying. And so, but, but sometimes those tenants, their voices go unheard, and so, you know, they reach out to us, and then we will try to, that's lower on the priority for us. Really, what we're trying to make sure is, do they have adequate plumbing? Do they have safe electrical? You know, is their drywall intact? And you would be, I think, sometimes disappointed by some of the conditions that we ultimately see.
Now, put in that perspective, that makes quite a bit more sense. You know, we're not going into a homeowner's house more so, or, I mean, this would be more helpful for a tenant.
Absolutely, and that's really the focus of it. We really don't go into very many owner-occupied homes. I bet I can count the number on, if not one hand, two hands for sure, on an annual basis of the number of owner-occupied homes we go into the interior.
Okay, well, that addresses my concerns then. Thank you.
Yeah, that's a good point, Councilman. Vice Mayor Duffy?
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, let me just kind of lighten it up. I've always had a pretty good relationship with code development and code enforcement. I think you guys do a good job, and I kind of like it when I just get the complaint and I call you guys, and you guys call that person rather than throwing them a 2,000-page book saying, here, figure it out. So, I'll keep it the same if I can. So, after this goes live webpage and you send letters to the HOA, I'm sure we're going to get calls from HOAs. When they have one of their Zoom meetings, if they requested somebody from the department to maybe join a board meeting to explain it to the board, would somebody do that?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, yes, and the letter that's being sent out to them states that, that they are welcome to call me directly, and we'll coordinate schedules and have a representative present, more than likely myself, to go through this with them, answer any questions that the community might have, and talk them through that. So, yes, we definitely are making sure that we can accommodate.
That's what I wanted to know. Thank you.
Okay, Councilwoman Winters?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm assuming when you guys find an infraction at a home, either inside or outside, wouldn't you usually give them time to correct that kind of compliance without any kind of a fee upfront?
Mayor, Councilmember Winters, you're absolutely right. So, the notice of violation that we issue upfront, unless there's an immediate health or safety concern, let me caveat it by saying that, if there's an immediate issue, we're going to address it if it's life health, life safety-related. But if it's something as simple as weeds or trimming a tree, yes, we're sending a notice of violation. There's a compliance date in that notice of violation, asking for voluntary compliance by that date. Our code enforcement inspectors go out and re-inspect, and I would say probably 75% of the time, we're getting voluntary compliance on those items and not having to escalate to issuing a civil citation or taking any further action.
That's very similar with the HOA does now. They give you a chance to correct the problem, and then there's no further fines on anything or anything. Okay, thank you.
Okay, Councilwoman Klein?
Hi, thank you. Having worked with some folks who, when left on their own, as they get older and older, sometimes these kinds of situations occur, and in my district and otherwise, people that I've known and have been involved where they've just become overwhelmed with what's happening in their home. I have a very close friend whose parents were living in a property where none of the toilets, their toilets were there, but none of them worked. And so, when the father became ill and was hospitalized, and the ambulance crew showed up to take care of the immediate situation, which was a heart attack, they became aware of the situation, that this particular home was not livable. The water didn't run, the toilets didn't flush, the washing machine didn't run, everything was infested with something of some sort. And having helped people work through those kinds of situations, I think it's very important to know that it doesn't happen to everybody, but when it happens, you need to be able to, sometimes it starts with a wellness call where you call someone to say, this person hasn't been seen for two weeks, and you call PD or firefighters to come in and see, you know, is everybody okay, because you can't get a hold of the person. And some of the conditions that I've helped people with are pretty astounding as to what they think is livable compared to what's truly healthy and a well-being for not only the individual who lives there, but for their immediate neighbors, whether it's a fire safety issue or whether it's just bugs and icky stuff. So, I think this is really something that is important to have available as a tool if needed for those situations. So, whether they're renting or owning, when a situation is out of control, sometimes you need to have a way to deal with it, and I think having something for our city is very important. So, thank you very much for doing this hard work. I really appreciate it.
You're very welcome.
Yeah, that's a very good point, Councilwoman. And so, in that case, if we came across one of those situations, because I live in a senior community also, we would want to call you and have you come, you know, because we don't know if the property's being rented, or if they own it, or what the deal is, right?
Mayor, you're correct, and we have dealt with that situation in the past, and we always try to, you know, engage friends or family to help if we can, or we do have, our partners at HSCV have been a great resource for us in dealing with those situations and working through and making sure that we are not just handling the life safety issue, but making sure that that resident is getting whatever they need. So, we do end up in some situations kind of being a catch-all in coordinating a variety of services beyond just code enforcement.
Great, great. Councilwoman Remley?
Thank you, Mayor. I just had a follow-up, and this is, you know, when we talk about how somebody has to maintain their property, the immediate thought that comes to my mind is property rights. You know, how much do we, as a government, have a right to tell somebody what they're going to do with their property, you know? So, my question, with the new ordinance that we're doing, do we have significant departures from the requirements that were in the international code that we've previously adopted?
Mayor...
Or are we infringing on property rights? That's my question, yeah.
Mayor, Councilmember Remley, I will tell you that I have worked with legal extensively on this document. I have not heard any concerns raised about violating property rights, and the content in terms of that minimum standard of maintenance is fairly consistent with what we had in the IPMC. There are not wide deviations between the two documents in regard, with regard to that.
Well, I noticed it got quite specific when it comes to pet waste, for example, you know, requiring that people have to go pick up after whatever their animal is twice a week. So, if they're not doing it twice a week, they're in code violation, right?
Mayor, Councilmember Remley, we're not out there daily...
But that's what it says.
Correct, and that would probably be something we would look at in response to an odor complaint, a complaint of a neighbor saying, hey, I can't enjoy my yard because I'm smelling such and such.
Right, exactly.
We would point to this section in the code and probably issue a notice of violation, educating that homeowner that that is the expectation, that they're picking it up at least twice a week to avoid those complaints and allow the adjacent neighbor to enjoy their property.
Okay, thank you.
Very good. Well, you did a really good job. You only had to have your boss come up once.
Yeah, not too shabby. This was a big document, so...
You know, one of the things that I want to make, I want to make sure of is that on the commercial, speaking commercially now, litter plays into code enforcement, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and we have a couple of shopping centers that, I don't know who does the maintenance on their trash, but it's like a, it's almost like an artifact that comes out of the top of it, you know? And then, you can't put any trash in, so people drop stuff, and it just, and then you get the wind, and it blows all over the parking lot, and, you know, it just, anyway. So, it's, and I know you don't go out looking...
Mayor, if you have specific areas, I'd be happy to receive an email from you with that information, and we'll go investigate that.
Good, thank you. Very good. Okay, item number two.
This is a presentation and discussion pertaining to citywide budgetary expenses.
I made that title longer. I was a little short of the title. Just rinse a little faster.
It was longer, she just read the word.
We're trying, we're trying to shorten those titles for you, Sheri.
And I appreciate that. Thank you.
Better on that. You know, Sheri has to read this before you can say it. Buying some time. All right. Well, good afternoon. Oh, I can't see Vice Mayor. Oh, no, I don't want to short you from the experience. All right. So good afternoon. Holly and I are here to talk about our budget overview for expenses. So we started off this budget season in February. Uh, we brought council a budget overview, kind of a general overview of the entire budget. Uh, we talked about revenues, uh, in our last, last council meeting, and today we're here to talk about expenses. I know, it's so exciting. So what we're going to talk about tonight, we're going to focus on is the citywide expenses, citywide and general fund by function and category. So what we mean when we say function is what type of expense or service are we providing? So it's public safety, which includes our fire, police, courts, public works, community services, which is our HSCV department and our parks and recreation. Then we have by category. So this is where we show the expense on where are we spending it? Personnel, supplies, services, et cetera. So. In those categories, we do provide some of these examples. So in personnel, what, what kind of expenses are included in personnel? Wages, taxes, benefits and retirement costs. So for supplies, that's really anything the department needs to provide those services to our residents, whether it be equipment, fuel, or whatever those operational supplies, uh, whatever that might be. So for services, these are things like utilities, landscaping, postage that we have to pay to mail. Uh, might be insurance claims or insurance for the city. Capital are one-time purchases over $100,000. So these are significant purchases for something of infrastructure or something that has a life or a useful life over multiple years. So that's in a different category that, uh, we fall into capital. And then transfers out, uh, we did go in our budget overview into kind of what transfers are and how we use them. Really in this, uh, for a use side, capital asset and asset replacement, when we're talking about the general fund is really that main purpose of the transfer out. So we're taking still the money from the general fund and we're providing it to our general capital asset replacement funds to provide them a source of funding, uh, for those projects. So for our fiscal 21 budget, because we're going through our 22 project, uh, budget right now, so we don't have those numbers. Uh, but in fiscal 21, by category, you can see, so this is citywide. This includes our general fund, all of our governmental funds, enterprise funds for sewer, water and trash, internal service funds, all of it. So that's a total of $415 million is that expenditure limit that we set. Uh, so here's kind of how it's broken down by personnel, capital, contingency and services. So almost, almost a little equal pie there with supplies and services being close to that quadrant. So we look at citywide by function. So mentioned enterprise fund is in there. That's about 27% of that pie. Uh, we have public works, public safety, uh, general government. And general government is your finance, IT, HR, legal, city council, city manager. So a lot of those, uh, service departments within the city. I don't know if I skipped two or one there. I guess I had an aggressive, I had an aggressive click. All right, general fund expense by category. So we narrowed down a lot on our general fund as we talked about before. That's really our city operating fund, if you will. It pays for the majority of our services or a lot of those, uh, general services we provide to our residents. And as a city, we do provide a lot of services to our residents. And for those services, it takes personnel. So it's definitely one of our larger categories is the personnel at 72%, services at 22. I know, I'm just messing up this clicker. So we look at by function. So you can see our public safety is the largest piece of that pie in the general fund, about 51%. We have that general government at 24, uh, and that was that, the finance, IT, HR, all of those departments, community services, uh, development and public works. So one thing that we always do when we talk about, I had mentioned our personnel, that line across there. So we talked about personnel. So we definitely have a largest part of our pie on that, uh, category is personnel. And just to make sure they're always lean and that we're efficient, we do always benchmark ourselves compared to other cities. So we do, so in this one, this is a five-year average that we looked at. Okay, how does our FTE per 1,000 a population look? So this is just something that, like I mentioned, we benchmark ourselves just to make sure we're staying lean and efficient when it comes to our, our staffing. Uh, we also do the same thing for total, for expenditures. So these, this is another five-year average of our governmental expenditures per 1,000 a population. Uh, just trying to benchmark again ourselves where we at, how are we doing with what we spend? So with that, I'll turn it over to Holly.
And then going into our expenditure limit, Andrea touched on that. Our current budget for FY21 is $415 million. In that, we have, um, $40 million worth of transfers that aren't technically included in our expenditure limit. So our real expenditure limit is 375, but when we add up our total budget for reporting purposes, it's 415. So we're saying that because when we're going into our next budget cycle on 22, our expenditure limit is our ceiling. So when we adopt the recommended, well, we're going to present the recommended budget, which will typically be our adopted tentative budget. That's setting our, that's setting our ceiling. That's sending the expenditure limit. So we won't be able to go above that limit. We can however, be flexible within that limit and making sure that we have enough contingency. We can move money, we can reallocate, but that may, meeting where we're adopting that budget, it's important just putting that set forward and transfers will not be included. So while we say 415, it's sometimes 375. I know that's somewhat confusing, but we also report different numbers. And then we have our, I could say numbers all day, but we have a expenditure limit ceiling that we can't go above $1.1 billion if we ever had enough expenses to do that. So. Well, we don't have enough money to do that, sir, but if we did, we could go that far without having to go to the state and readjust it. So just some little fun facts about expenditure limits and, uh, and that does go up every year with population inflation. So another thing about contingency, so contingency is really that level of flexibility that cities give themselves. It's actually a requirement by state. So there's not a, a mandated number. But when Andrea had shown in our first example, it's 20%. So 20% of our budget is $74 million. So that gives us enough flexibility to make adjustments throughout the budget process. So while the budget is, it's a tool, it's a forecast. This is our expenses through the year of what we're projecting, but we're also going to be flexible and nimble enough should revenues come in better, then we can make those adjustments. So just like we did this year when we budgeted flat, we were able to come with two budget amendments, one for capital and one for operating to make those moves without, with being in statutory requirements and not violating any laws. So contingency is an important part of our budget. It's required, but it obviously, and grants, like we use contingency for grants for unforeseen projects. So contingency is always a, a budget's friend. So one-time versus ongoing, we talk about this a lot. We talk about it in the sources, what our sources are for one-time and ongoing. And then we just want to talk about on the expense side, what would we use it for? So one-time uses are for capital projects. Those are for asset replacement. Um, we would fund contingency with that. So our money, it's like our savings account. We have money in the side, but we're not going to pay our mortgage with our savings account. So we would pay our mortgage with our salary, which is our ongoing uses. So that's what we would fund, personnel, supplies, services and our debt service payment. So we don't want to pay our mortgage with our one-time money. We want to make sure we can pay that every year or else we're going to get kicked out of our house. So just the differences between the one-time and ongoing. And that's it. I mean, pretty simple stuff, um, on a very, just if you take out all the zeros, it's pretty simple stuff. We have, um, 200 funds, so we try to break it into functions and those categories just to simplify, uh, the way we budget in bigger pieces of the pie terms. So our big, long day of budget fund will be April 16th, where we're going to do our budget retreat. That's where we're going to present the city manager's recommended budget. We're going to talk about the expenditure limits. We're going to talk about the increases, capital projects, carry forward, um, personnel, all the different funds, enterprise funds, the slids, the property taxes, the sales tax, anything you could possibly imagine that's in this, this big book that I have. We're going to talk about that, but it'll be in presentation form. So just in case you don't want to read the 400-page document we are going to provide to you, we'll also show it to you in charts and graphs and how finance does. Um, so we will take that recommended budget and we'll adopt the budget on May 4th. Or council will adopt what we're proposing. But just because we're proposing the budget doesn't mean that we can't make changes from the final. And then when we adopt the final, doesn't mean we can't make changes throughout the year. So again, it's just our plan for the next year and how we're going to adopt and allocate our resources with our forecasted revenues that we're providing. Then we're going to come back and adopt the final property taxes on June 15th and we'll wrap up the 22 budget process. Easy peasy.
Very good.
So with that, we'll take any questions you might have.
Councilwoman Hastings?
Comments, compliments.
Only, only compliments? Okay.
Yep.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, thanks for the presentation. I mean, this is an important topic. You know, this is, um, surprised residents' understanding and knowing where their money is going. I think we often, we forget it's, it's not government's money. It belongs to people. This comes out of people's paychecks, comes out of different places. Transparency is important and I'm glad that we have these, you know, public discussions so people can see. Uh, one concern I have is, you know, this, this PowerPoint tonight, and I don't know if the last week was the same, but, or last week was the same. It wasn't in the minutes. And so if I'm trying to look at this presentation in advance as a resident, I mean, even, even me, this is the first time I'm seeing this specific one. I know you guys gave us a rundown earlier in the week, but we want residents to be able to, I mean, I don't know how many people watch us live on Facebook, but it's, it's not, it's not in the thousands. Or if it is, we, we've usually done something horribly wrong. But, uh, we need to be able to see this like as residents in advance or, you know, coming back around to it rather, because not everybody has time to watch the, the video. So is there a reason that the presentations are included in the minutes?
No, uh, Mayor, Councilmember, uh, Hastings, typically we do include that in the agenda item. However, sometimes with timing, we don't make it into the cutoff that gets into your packet. So we do apologize for that. We try to send it to you, at least email it to you ahead of time. Uh, what we will do is if, when we miss that cutoff, is we do post it online on the meeting calendar. So you'll be able to see the revenue one from last week and the expense one from this week attached to the meeting online. So it'll still be available. Um, I also send it to Sheri. Sheri has it available as well. So it's still accessible. Uh, it's just not attached in the agenda item.
Sure. Well, and just, just another thing too, is especially with City Hall being closed right now, if people want to make a comment on it, you know, they might not have time to be watching the presentation live and then trying to call in and, and go through the process. So it would be nice to have, it would be, it would be right, in my opinion, for them to be able to see this presentation beforehand and then write down questions they might have and decide if they want to do a call for the public. So I mean, I just, I think transparency is important, especially during COVID where, uh, unfortunately we can't have people here. And I, I just wanted to stress that. But thank you for your presentation and we look forward to the exciting budget process this year.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Okay, um, we don't have any more questions, so.
All right. Well, thank you. Have a great Tuesday.
I had a fun fact about $1.1 billion. Ew, it was complicated.
Okay, um, I will entertain a motion to adjourn the work session.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
Ben moving to second. And all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We're adjourned.